Welcome to Touring with the Candidates for Carpinteria City Council, 5th District. I'm your producer, Larry Nimmer. In this program, you'll see Al Clark and Greg Cardy. The third candidate for the 5th District, Patrick O'Connor, was not available to participate. Each candidate was given 20 minutes of tape time to give us a tour and/or talk about the local issues. So without further ado, let's take a look.
Well, good morning Larry.
Hello, and you are?
I'm Al Clark, and how are you doing Larry?
I'm good, running for city council.
Yeah, I'm running for city council in the 5th District. This, my house is in the 5th District right here.
Gotcha.
And if we go over here, this is, this is part of the 5th District right here. This is a neighborhood down, looking down a street, the neighborhood of Conchaloma that's in the 5th District. Let's go look at some more parts of the 5th District, okay? All right Larry, we're downtown now on Linden. Linden is part of the 5th District, so we're in the 5th District right now, but we're looking down into the 1st District. Anyway, in the background is the Spot Restaurant. It's not in the 5th District, but you can see it from the 5th District. And actually, it's, it's a feature that is shared by all Carpinterians. One of the many aspects in the 5th Districts that's, that's common to many people who live in Carpinteria. All right Larry, and we're still near the Spot, but now we're looking into the 5th District. We're looking at the parking lot in Parking Lot Number 3. And it's, it's not in the 5th District, but the line is down the middle of the street. It's still in the 1st District. But this is a very important area in town. It's also, it's a controversial issue right now, what should be in it. Look at the trees. But this, this, this area is, in my opinion, it's, it is valuable open space. I mean, it has beautiful trees, and it's, it's a, it's a public use area in a urban setting. It's, it's the only open space that people who live around here have that they could call a park. I mean, they can go to Linden Field, obviously, and many people do, but it's under control, the state park, and we never know what's gonna happen to that. Anyway, that's, the, the parking lot has an interesting history of birthing not only the skate park, because there was a trial skate park here, turned out to be too noisy for neighbors, so it, we've, we've got it moved. And, but it also holds the, the farmer's market when the, when Linden is being occupied by other things. And, and it was very important during the flood, as a, as a transit stop, the only way people could get to, to Santa Barbara was on the train. Hi Larry, we've come up Linden Avenue, and we're now, we're now fully in the 5th District. And we're looking down the beach, and right now, there's a couple of very important projects that are on the slate that I support. One is 700 Linden directly behind me. You can see the construction fencing. It's gonna reuse and repurpose some existing buildings, make them over, and current with some interests and, and businesses that are current for the time. Also, across the street from there, down at the end of the corner, you can see the Palms Restaurant. Now it's gonna become a hotel with a small restaurant operation. Again, it's another repurpose and reuse, and we're, we're making the place vibrant without having to, to do any new building. Now I'd like to pivot around, if you can, and we'll look at the Arts Center over here. I, I just wanna point that out because we're standing near here. It's a, it's an organization that I helped start. I'm not on the board anymore, but, but I still support what they do. And I, I like to point it out because it's an example of, of people coming together and making a dream come true. And now we have an Arts Center in town that is much appreciated by, by many people. And, you know, we're able to reach out and, and bring people in to create and enjoy art in Carpinteria. All right Larry, we're near the Carpinteria Library. It now truly is the Carpinteria Library, because City of Carpinteria has now taken this over and is operating it. And it's a big relief. We've been sinking a lot of money into this for years, but we're finally able to take it over to actually control costs and, and run the programs that, that happen there. So that's a really good thing. It wouldn't have been possible without Measure X, which is a, a sales tax that everybody probably remembers, that I initiated, and the council approved to send it to the voters, and, and the voters overwhelmingly passed it. And it's been a boon to not only backfill our, our bank account that we had to leach into to get money to pay our bills, but also to fund a lot of important projects in town. And down here, I wanna look at a Veterans Center. It's, it's an important public facility. It's widely used. A lot of people are talking about, you know, we're gonna have a senior City of Center, and we are gonna have a senior center. The only questions are, where's it gonna be and what's gonna happen there? But this is one possible candidate. There used to be a senior lunch program there, and it was a great meeting spot for seniors, but the funding died up on that. And so, you know, I think it's good that cities get involved in this. Maybe we can coordinate some of these things that used to happen and should happen, all in one place. And this is just one candidate of a place that could happen. And it's not being used all the time, so, you know, it, it's, it's a possible candidate, a lower cost one than building a whole new building somewhere else. All right Larry, we're in another place in the 5th District, and this, this important area of town, it's where residents live. So this is a residential street, and we have a mix of single-family housing and multiple housing. And this is, this is a very important area because people live here, and these are the people of Carpinteria. All right Larry, we're on Carpinteria Avenue now, and we're still in the 5th District. We're just past City Hall at the site of the new skate park. And what I wanna say about this is, this, this was first initiated by a group of kids who are now not even young adults anymore. You know, 16 years ago, they started coming to the City Council and, and wanting to, to build this for the youth. And, you know, we've been, we've been encouraging them and following along, and if we finally got to a point, you know, there was a, there was a money gap, and we were able to backfill the money needed to do this project from the funds of Measure X. So it's another success story of Measure X that I wanted to share with you. And it's gonna be a really great thing for the youth when it gets built. Hi Larry, we're out on Bluffs 1. This is a undeveloped portion of the Bluffs that's now owned by a developer. And we had a conceptual review for a hotel project he had earlier in the year. And the, his basic design was to fill the ridge line that you can see behind me with his project, kind of oriented horizontally across the lot to take view of, I mean, to take advantage of the views that would be afforded from the hotel. We have, we have suggested a number of changes and that he come back, but this is a, this is a, there was a very interesting conceptual review hearing, mainly in that you, you, there were hordes of people that came out. It's kind of turnout that you haven't seen since the, when, when the Bluffs was a subject before. And so it was, it was, it was always great when you could get people off the couch and get interested in, in government. So I was happy for that part of it. And we'll see what happens in the future. I hope, you know, they, they come back with something that is, you know, is acceptable to all, and, and that the people stay engaged. All right Larry, we're here at the Carpinteria Bluffs, and we're approaching the Bluffs Monument. I came to Carpinteria in 1986 to join my wife, and seemed like almost right away, I started fighting to save the Bluffs. We really, I think technically began in 1988, when there were a number of public hearings held by the city for a development out here. And there was very, very many people that were very vocal about not having a development on the Bluffs. And it led to, first, a political resolution with the changing of the City Council, and then finally, 10 years after that, a purchase of the property by, by the citizen. But ever since 1988, I, I had fought for this property to be saved for public use. And we finally had a willing seller, and we were able to get it done. So it's, this is very, it's just a wild park, and, and anybody can come out here. My, my wife designed this monument, and so it, it's a, it kind of commemorates the public purchase. And we actually have our name down here in a couple places as being donors. And anyway, everybody knows the Bluffs, and it's a wonderful place. And it's, it's another example of the people of Carpinteria coming together, having a dream, and making it come true. Okay Larry, we're, we're at the edge of Carpinteria, actually looking out into the county area. And, you know, you were asking me a question while we were riding around about the biggest issues in Carpinteria. And, and I think that there's, there, there always have been big issues, and there always going to be big issues. And the big issues, we think that they're, they're so big and important right now, and of course they are, but in six months from now, it'll, it'll be different issues. I think the big issue in Carpinteria, 30 years ago, and, you know, sometime in the future, is gonna be how to keep Carpinteria Carpinteria. I think that people have a real community spirit here, and they, they like their little small town, they like the environment that they live in, they like the little business community that we have downtown. And so I think if we, if we, you know, I think Carpinteria's gonna change, and Carpinteria will grow. But if we're smart about all the decisions we make, and we keep in mind our environment and our small little business town, and the people that live here, and make sure that we honor and respect all those elements together, we'll be fine. And so I think what that is, it's a, it's, it's a choosing. It's a, a, a hard selection process and a choosing something. For example, there was an article in The Independent that was highlighting three projects on downtown on Linden, and we talked about two of them, the Palms and 700 Linden, but there's also the, the Surfliner Hotel. And so, you know, I, I like the purpose, the, the projects that repurpose and reuse things and don't spread out the city border. I understand that there's gonna be a development process for that project, so I don't have an opinion about it right now. But I, but I just, I really want, this point is not to talk about a specific project, but a, a mindset and an attitude and, and a way of approaching things to, to help us feel that we're still the same town at the end of the day. I don't, I don't know if you ever went to Huntington Beach when you were a kid, or if you've been to Huntington Beach lately, but it sure ain't the same place. I mean, it's, it's 10-story high rises everywhere on the beach, and it's, it's, it's not my vision of Carpinteria. And so that's, that's one of the things I'm, I'm trying to do in Carpinteria. Now, this, this lot here is called the Baylor Farms, and it's otherwise called by a developer, Red Tail Hawk Project or something like that. And what they wanna do is build a bunch of high-density apartments, and it's, it's, and then the idea would be the city annexism, because it's, it's an, it's a urban use, it's converting rural use to urban. And, you know, there's a number of problems with that. I think the main one is this, this rural-urban boundary. I think it's so important to protect that, and to, you know, I'd rather see us develop more intensely downtown than, than this endless urban sprawl that, that may be in our future. And so I think it's a very important to maintain our urban-rural boundary. And it doesn't, it doesn't really, the density that they're proposing doesn't fit into Carpinteria. I would like to make it a smaller project. I think there's a place in town where we could do a similar project. However, the county, I think one of their motivations may be that they're looking for to, to complete their allotment of the RENA numbers. RENA is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. It's a number of houses the state imposes on every jurisdiction on how to create more housing for more people. And I think that's, to some extent, a noble thing to be doing, but I, I would rather see us use our own guidelines to meet that, meet those goals, instead of be forced to take this project from the, the county, which is much higher density that we have in California, in Carpinteria. It's not, doesn't have a Carpinteria feel. It's adding thousands of car trips a day on this tiny road, and I don't think the neighbors are too happy about it, but I don't think there's not much we can do, because the county's just gonna force it on us. But I, you know, the reason for bringing you here was really this more, the most important thing is this rural-urban boundary, that it's, it's so important for Carpinteria to maintain that buffer between agriculture and, and urban uses. All right Larry, we're here at the Lagunitas area, and this was originally intended to be all industrial, but we made it about 50% residential, and, you know, there's still a, a commercial zoning over here, but nobody's building here, and this might be a potential housing site, among others in town. It, it doesn't violate the rural-urban boundary. It's some land in town. You know, we have to work out if there's any traffic problems. With any site, you know, there's, there's issues to, to be ironed out, but this is just one alternative site maybe to the Baylor Farms. All right Larry, we're at the other end of Carpinteria now. We're, we're actually out of the 5th District, and we're at the west end of Carpinteria on Villarreal. This is a, a recent People's Self-Help Housing Project. And I brought you here for two reasons. One was to tell you about an arts education program that my wife and I did for about 20 years at all the People's Self-Help Housing Projects in Carpinteria. And the idea was to teach art to children and give them self-esteem primarily. And, you know, they would, they would conceive of a project, and they would either bring it off by themselves, or they'd have group projects, and they would complete a project. And we even were able to show them at the Arts Center, and people were able to sell their work. And so I think a very, it was very good encouragement, and we hope this project continues. The other reason why I brought you here Larry is the housing thing. I think that there, there is a housing crisis in Carpinteria. There's not enough places to live, and too many people don't wanna live there. And, you know, People's Self-Help Housing offers a good model, I think. It's basically a public housing operation, and in that way, they're able to, to, by cutting out profit, they can maximize the lowness of the rent. And so I, I'm interested in finding out maybe how, if, how, and if the city should actually get involved in doing their own project like that, or should we encourage self-help housing to do other projects like that? So that's something I wanna look forward to doing, is to look at, look at creative ways to make more housing in Carpinteria. There's some other things we can do. We can, we can really enforce short-term rentals. You know, about a third of our housing, nobody lives in it, because they're either short-term rentals or second homes. And so, you know, we need, we need to figure out a way to maybe clamp down on that, and look at other ways to create housing in, in existing places like old motels or old commercial buildings. And I just wanna say Larry, that I wanna thank you very much for taking the time to join me on this trip, and my best wishes to all the citizens out there in Carpinteria. And I hope that you get well-informed and make your decisions wisely.
I think so.
Thank you Larry.
Larry Nimmer.
Hello.
How you doing today?
Good, and you are?
I'm Greg Cardy, and I'm running for reelection in the 5th District in the wonderful, great city of Carpinteria.
Do you wanna get going?
No, I'd like to sit in the courtyard and, and just talk about myself a little bit. Tell the community a little bit about me and my family, and just, just, I'd like to just sit down and-
Okay, let's go out there.
Welcome to my family home. This is where I grew up. I lived here from 1961 till, I've never had any other address on my driver's license or anything else. I've lived here pretty much all my life. And I am going to be 69 years old in March. My mother drew the plans for this house, and we were living on the corner at the time, and this was our baseball diamond. And I, I can't say enough things about growing up in Carpinteria. It's, it's, it was a child's dream. My father was superintendent of schools from 1960 for almost 30 years. He was 30-something years old, had six kids, and we were all pretty young, and there was so much for us to do in Carpinteria. And my dad always had the time to take us to the beach, to the pier, go fishing, play volleyball, body surfing, hiking in the mountains. It just, just the upbringing here is just, it's, it's awesome. You know, I'm a lucky, lucky, blessed guy to, to have grown up here. And then a tragedy happened in, in, right after we moved into this house. My older brother Mark was killed in a hunting accident in Summerlin, and that kinda set our family back a little bit, because he was the guy that gave me the piggyback rides and all that. But, you know, life goes on, and, you know, it, it, as far as volunteerism, my father taught me from an early age that, well, he volunteered for everything. He would fix bikes, give them to kids, just kids that didn't have bikes to go to school. And he taught me to be truthful, to be honest. He had a strong faith. I had a strong faith. I still do. He, he, he just, I couldn't have had better parents and, and a place to grow up, and I'm so proud to say I'm from Carpinteria. And I, I, just an interesting story to interrupt telling about myself Larry. I had my mother's finish. We had some of her relatives, a husband and wife, come and visit. They were my age. They came to visit the United States. They came to our home in California, Carpinteria, and they never left Carpinteria. They just enjoyed it so much. And then an interesting thing is a previous Touring with the Candidates, she lives in Lopplain in Finland. She watched one of the Touring of the Candidates happen to stumble upon it, and she just was delighted to see things that she saw when she was here. And we're, we're so blessed to be here in Carpinteria that I can, I can't say enough things about that. But back to my family, we all went to Carpinteria High, graduated Carpinteria High. We went to elementary school too. My first grade classroom was my daughter's kindergarten classroom, the same classroom at Cannolino. So I've seen a lot in Carpinteria as far as change, you know, and I kinda, Carpinteria today is a place that is, not a place that was. And I often hear, you know, I wanna keep it the way it is. Well, that's a little bit of a problem, because you can't. Things evolve, things change, and you, you need to think about the change and try to make them as, as positive as you can, and benefit the community as best you can. But back to my family, there didn't used to be houses across the street. We used to be able to walk just straight to the beach. And, you know, there was residents down there on the beach, and 6th Street, City Street went all the way to Jelly Bowl, and it was a cul-de-sac. So it's just, I'm just trying to say that things change. Larry used to have a big old fro. You don't have that anymore. You know, and then I, I, I understand how precious Carpinteria is and what we have here, and the last thing I wanna do is lose that. You know, I, I'm being, not bullied, but I'm, I'm being a little bit the campaign, just from my opponent. It's just, it's sad to, to say, "He did this, he did this." And I guess that's what you have to do, is say all the i's, and even if it's true or not, that's what you do. Well, I'm not one that usually takes that route, and I'm trying my hardest to take the high road, because I, I've been involved with a, a lot dedicating my time to the place that I live of and love. It just, you know, as far as development, when I was a teenager, I had a stingray bike, and they wanted to build a, I think it was an Exxon gas station at Baylor, and they put a big sign up that said Exxon, "Coming Soon." And I was young, and I, I grabbed some white paint we had, and I went out there and painted over that thing, 'cause I couldn't stand seeing a, a gas station on my, it was my playground, my stomping ground, the Bluffs. The Bluffs is just right here.
Where are we here? This is-
This is Conchaloma. Yeah, but the, the whole Bluffs, you know, the, the Wardell House over there on Dump Road, and, and it was originally the Higgins residents, I believe. And Jelly Bowl is actually the real name on the old maps, is Higgins Cove. And that, that's where I pretty much was every day. I was down there with my friends, and we'd, we'd be having the time of our life. And we had a couple piers back then also, and it'd be nice to have another pier. But I don't know what the community thinks about that. You'd have to start the ball rolling now to get one some years down. But, you know, there's, things are evolving and changing faster than they ever have, not just here in Carpinteria, but throughout the whole world. And, you know, we're losing some control here on what we can do because of state mandates. There's a lot of bills that were passed just last week. Newton-Son Findem, and they're, they're, they're gonna go into effect. And so when it comes to like the parking lot, that's like a serious big issue, and I understand that, that we may lose control of whatever hap- we, we may have no say-so what happens there. We could end up with three, four, or taller residents on that property. That's happening right now. We're losing our local control. So we're dealing with that, and there's talk about, you know, not going to the Coastal Commission and not having sequen- reviews, and it's, it's, it's crazy what, we work so hard to preserve a small community like Carpinteria, and, and you're forced to doing things that, that really we don't want. And, you know, another example is that, this district elections, you know, I, I look back at it, and I think I, a small community, it's not good for. And I, I wish that it never happened. I, I, I see it dividing Carpinteria. I see it dividing my neighborhood. But I'm optimistic that in the future, 'cause we don't have a choice, we're stuck with this for years to come. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna circle back to a little bit more about myself and my family. I remember sitting at our dining room table, and my dad had these stick figures, and he was making this guy called Pridey. And, and he actually had a t-shirt printed up with his Pridey stick figure on it, and I asked him what he was doing, and he was starting a, a campaign to have pride in Carpinteria. And that was sometime before Carpinteria Beautiful was born, but my father is the one that pretty much started Carpinteria Beautiful. My father is the one that started the Noon Rotary Club. He's the one that made sure there was always volleyball courts on Main Beach for the youth and grownups alike to, to do what they love. And interesting thing is, I married Jerry Lozaro, and Mary Beth is a Lozaro, and my father-in-law, Joe Lozaro, and the rest of the family, Mike Lozaro, and, and Joanne, and Angel. When they came to town, you talk about volunteerism, they, they were on board the day they got here. Mike, my father-in-law started the, the Morning Club Rotary. Mike Lozaro, event, Carp events, pretty much does all the parades here. He, he is the main heartbeat of the Avocado Festival, the Car Show, and, and Mary, Mary Beth, I think everybody knows Mary Beth Cardy. She's running for Santa Barbara County School Boards. She's running for Santa Barbara County School Boards. She took the place of, my dad retired after 30 years from carp schools, but he went to Santa Barbara County Schools. He was on that school board president for quite some time. And Mary Beth took his place on that board and she is incredible in anything that she does. Involved with the Women's Club, my wife's in the Women's Club and just, you talk about It's unbelievable. I'm in awe in Carpeneria when there's an event and how many people volunteer to help or, and the service clubs and the church groups and the nonprofits, they all step up for any time the community's in need or if there's anything that needs to be done. And then myself, I've been a general contractor for, since the mid-'70s, specializing in custom carpentry. I built the stage at the Alcarst Theater with Bill from Curtis Dance. We put the curtains up and we got it all ready when the community took over the theater from Metropolitan. You know, I enjoyed being a part of that. And then the visitor center at the Seal Fountain, I built a lot of that. I was on the ARB when we designed the downtown. The Plaza at the Seal Fountain, I remember we dealt with Annie Newman's office and we, the wall was higher, we lowered it, we put some detail on it and I'm proud of that. And at one point there, I was the only one in the room that was in favor of that bag of light. And I asked them if they could bring one down and plug it in. And so they brought a light down one night and plugged it in and then everybody loved it. And we almost got the big globe light that you kind of see over by Cantalino School. But our downtown isn't new anymore. It needs some polishing. It's actually, to my feel, it needs some help right now, our downtown. And I'm on the Downtown Vitality Committee with my fellow councilmember, Roy Lee. And the last meeting we had, we talked about some incentives, some programs were businesses in our downtown just to help them just paint the front of their building or put a new awning, maybe a new front door, new lighting. So that's in the process. I'd like to see that move forward in the near future. And then a big issue for me, actually I have a couple of big issues. One of them is our seniors. They deserve a senior center, you know. Our goal is to have a community center, but a senior center will be a part of that. But we want to see the, I'm on the seniors service planning committee with, again, with Councilmember Roy Lee and, you know, they deserve a place to call their home pretty much. We, in the process of planning right now, we turned out an assessment, assessment need questionnaire and I think we've gotten over 400 replies from seniors. So it tells me that it's long overdue and I'm going to do everything I can to deliver a senior center as soon as possible to our community. Another one is our coastal trail. When I first got on council 16 years ago, that was one thing I really was striving to get accomplished my first term in office. But it's taken this long and we're on a home run right now of getting that done. We're getting the connections to Santa Claus and the Rincon, to Rincon County Park. And we're making the connections by S&amp;S Seeds and I'm pushing to get it through the property by the spot across from Tomahill Park. I'd like to see that move from, quickly now, right now. That will take people on the trail from Linden Avenue to Elm to Ash. Do I take that back? Elm to Holly, sorry. Ash is further along, can't get that far. But Carpenerians have shown where there's a trail they're used. Another trail I'd like to see is from the Singing Springs side of the footbridge, through those redwood trees that are there and connect it to Carpeneria Avenue, which would connect to the path that goes all the way over to Villarreal on the other side of the freeway. And those are two things that are in my heart that get completed soon. A passion of mine, when I have spare time, which it seems I'm getting less and less of that, is gardening. You know, plemaria's are a love of mine, they're very drought tolerant, easy to grow. And I got hooked on them a few years ago when I bought a little stick in Hawaii. But I have air plants, I have ferns, I have a lot of native plants. I just, anything that grows, I love. But another issue, which is pretty serious also, is our environment, you know, what we're doing and we can do more, we should do more, we have to do more. But I wanted to bring up our styrofoam ban, you know, where that actually started. Years before the city banned styrofoam, the Avocado Festival banned styrofoam. And I brought it to E.J. Harrison, you know, they're friends of mine because the Avocado Festival is actually also a zero-waste festival. I don't know if you've noticed, there's no trash cans there. We sort through everything and everything that can be recycled gets recycled and the food gets recycled. And I've become good friends with E.J. Harrison. I've been down there a few times and they've given me tours of the plant and I enjoy working with them on environmental issues for our city. I've been a supporter of the arts in Carpeneria and the arts includes music and theater for my whole life, pretty much. I volunteered, might have been over a year of my time at the Art Center, Linda Fairley Art Center. I was a supervising worker there. I was involved with the architecture, the engineering, all the structural, getting all the permits, getting all the deputy inspections, the structural inspections and completing the building. I was involved from the beginning to the end of the building of the Linda Fairley Art Center. There was many volunteers that worked there, but I was a supervisor. I enjoyed that. Again, I'd just like to say I understand how special, precious and what we have here in Carpeneria and I never want to lose that. I'll do whatever I can to preserve that. We are a jewel here in Carpeneria, a city like none other. You know, I used to run with my opponent, Al Clark and Brad Stein, several times. Brad Stein was like a mentor to me and he, he knows to this day how precious Carpeneria is and what we have and Al Clark, I think, is losing that actually. I think he's taking a path that I don't understand. Save our city. I believe I've been a really good steward of Carpeneria and I will continue to be a good steward of Carpeneria and I would really like to have your vote to save our city. Actually, I can use that on my side. I want to save our city.
Well, good luck to you, Greg. Nice to see you.
All right, thanks, Larry. Have a good day.
I hope you've enjoyed this episode of Touring with the Candidates and found it informative and useful. Until next time, I'm Larry Nimmer.